Well, we can get started here. It is 7:03 PM.
Got it.
We are called to order our first item of business. Any corrections, additions or corrections to the agenda?
Hey Eric, it's Bonnie from last week and having just recently done, or excuse me, last month. You had added to that agenda discussion on return to in-person meetings. I don't believe we, I listened to the meeting again, so I'm pretty certain we did not get to that topic last month. I don't know if you want it in this month's agenda.
Right Bonnie, I was thinking about that.
We can discuss certainly. Unfortunately, I wish it was more there to discuss.
Under new business 8E.
Why, that would be old business. We've been meeting forever, so. Can, can we know? Did we get a roll call? I don't know. For some reason, I'm just not seeing a lot of information on who is at this meeting. So could I just ask who's here?
We've got, I can give you a quick rundown Kathy.
Thanks.
Janie, Bonnie, Bill, John, Danny.
After Bill, what did you say? Or John?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Matt.
Matt's on the phone. Hey.
He's here somewhere.
Is, did you say Jenny?
Yep, Jenny's here. I believe we've got.
Yeah, everybody I guess.
Melissa's here.
Hi Melissa.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Yena and Jillian are here.
Jillian. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Okay, so we'll add that to the agenda discussing return to in-person. Good, I think, to keep our eyes on that goal. That will take us up to item number three, an opportunity for the public to address the board. Are there any members of the public here this evening that would like to address the board? Not hearing anybody jumping in, we'll move on to item number four, the approval of the minutes. These are the minutes of the November 16th board meeting. Bonnie had sent those out on Saturday. Bonnie, I do have one correction that I noted, which is that under the HR committee, it's listed that the library is going to $17 an hour for as the base for starting salaries, but it's 15.
Okay, 15 rather than 17.
Yep.
Got it.
And that's a, 15 is a starting salary for a library assistants, who are kind of the entry level position, and then library associates, which is the next level up, part-time working over 20. So they qualify for benefits and enrollment in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. They start at 17.
Okay, I will note that correction in the minutes. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on the minutes? I think in general, Bonnie, your usual thorough job.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. I will say this, I won't leave it until the week of the next meeting anymore because I relived our last meeting.
Is your said than done Bonnie?
Yeah.
Okay, not hearing any other comments. I prefer a motion to approve the minutes as a method.
I so move.
And second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing that opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved. Okay, our next item up here then is going to be the financial reports. So we don't have anything listed as far as a property tracks, property tax transfer that was received in November, but we did receive a property tax transfer of $193,537 on December the 1st. So that will show up on the next revenue expenditure report when we run that for January meeting. That amount received means that we are at 989,731 received for the year, which is a, that's a good number. That puts us about 24,700 from what we had budgeted, what we had made a property tax levy request for. So I would expect based off of previous years that we'll get one, maybe two dribs and grabs here that will make up most of the rest of that distance for the next month or so. So that is good news. Looks like we're close to full property tax revenue received. We are also doing very well with the passport fees. I had some exciting numbers there to report in the director's report. Over $2,000 in revenue again this past month. November was actually our, or Martha, our second busiest month for passport applications. Second only actually to, I think it was August 2021. So very good deal. We had a lot of folks, usually have a lot of folks that come in end of, end of November or end of December. They've got kids that are off school or kids that are home from school and they want to take care of a passport application, get their cross off their list.
That, the 2000, Eric, how many passports does that sort of equate to? Is that, is that?
Um, if I remember correctly from Martha, we had over 50 applications that we processed in November.
Yeah, November was 50.
50, okay.
August, which was our busiest, I think that was 85, is that right?
75.
75. I like my number better.
Well, I can't help you with that.
Okay. So that does put us in a position where we're already over $10,000 dollars for revenue. That's where we ended November, plus where we started in December. And we're on course to, right now, exceed $17,000 revenue for the fiscal year.
And how does that volume affect staff?
Right now, I would say that the volume is is fine. We're not getting inundated too much on any one day. And while it's a higher level than we had before, my sense in conversations and working with the staff is that it hasn't reached anything like a limit where it would become a real challenge. Pulling staff away for too much time and starting to create unacceptable amounts of stress.
Yeah, but I'm saying, what I'd like you to do for me tonight, Luke, is
We can also set our own availability, so it's limited to certain times, which helps.
You do all this by appointment, right?
Yeah.
Good, good.
Just going to ask that, if it's a walk-in program.
So each of our four agents is responsible for going in week to week and keeping their schedule on the LibCal calendar updated. And also always has the option as well if they know that they're going to be particularly busy in a given week, something that I know that I've made use of at times when I have, you know, a day where I'm putting together board packets or something, and you can always just go in and just clear out the day. Like, I'm not going to do appointments today. You know, I got a deadline, we got to focus on working this, I'm just not going to have time. So.
Do you ever have to turn away appointment, basketball appointments?
I don't believe we've had to do that thus far. The only folks that we have turned away would have been if somebody, we may have had a couple of folks that came in and were like, we have to do this right now. And weren't able to do it right now, then that might have been that, but that would have been just a handful by and large. We've got a lot of availability between the four of us in any given week. And usually we have a lot of slots that go unused on any given week.
Eric, another quick question about passport. Would it ever be possible for the library to expand to do passport renewals?
No. And the reason why is that the State Department will not allow it.
Oh.
They have as one of their big rules in capitalized letters that if you are doing a renewal, which means you qualify to fill out a DS-82 rather than the DS-11, that you have to mail that in. They are very, very definite that they do not want to see any of the DS-82s coming to them from acceptance agencies. That is.
Oh, sorry Eric, I'm sorry.
It's, so we actually do end up with a lot of folks that'll come in and they'll qualify for that renewal and they'll want to be sure that everything is good. And usually what we'll do is we'll like, you know, we can't process this for you, but we'll take a look at the application. And if we see anything that looks like it needs to be fixed or adjusted, if the picture doesn't look good, we'll, we'll tell you, but we can't do anything more than that. I would love if we could expand into that. I think it would be really well received. I do. So from from you to the State Department.
I will also mention that when we say, or when we talk about renewals, for example, anyone who is renewing a passport that was issued when they, when they were a kid under 16, that is even though they are renewing their passport by the State Department's definition, they have to go through the full, you know, the full regular application, make an appointment with us, that kind of a thing. So we do get a lot of kids getting set up with new, new passports or essentially renewing their passports. And the same with adults, if they don't meet all of the criteria to renew by mail. So we do get when, so whenever someone asks if we do renewals, there are, there are lots of follow-up questions with that, so.
Because it's the State Department, yeah, that's a good point Katie. State Department doesn't consider it a renewal unless it was issued after you were 16 years, 16 years or older, and that it was issued within the last 15 years, and that you still have the passport and it's still in good condition. If you don't meet any of those criteria, then it's, you know, it's another application from the library for a DS-11.
Got it, thank you.
It's a, it's a lot of fun. We could probably talk your ears off about passport minutia all night. So stop. We're all in our annual recertification testing with the State Department, so. Okay, any other questions with passports? Otherwise, I will keep moving here. And really the next big thing that I had to draw attention to was the bottom line, which is the 649751, which comes out to 60.59% expanded, which is where I would expect us to be. So we continue to be on course, have a soft landing at the end of the fiscal year.
Eric, could you make this a little bigger?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, any questions on the financial reports? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second from Janie. Finances, so we will do a roll call vote. Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Trustee Heinsohn.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Zaudi.
Aye.
Sounds good. Motion carries, financial documents are approved. I will scooch us forward here to checks. So these are checks for the minutes numbers, 14995, and then we have, because of the big Amazon bill, a double gap. Skipping two check numbers. And then 14998 to 15028. Couple to draw quick attention to, and then I'll field any questions anyone might have. First is the Chicago Sprinkler. Just moving my Zoom box with everyone's portraits in it, covering up my, oh here, the Chicago Sprinkler Company. That is for an annual charge for putting our sprinkler system, the lawn sprinklers down for the winter. And we'll see a similar charge when they come back out again in the spring and put things back up again. Another charge to highlight, that's not a every month one, is our charge to send us. That is the cost of a new battery and some replacement pads for our AAD. So. Moving down a little. We've got $350 to rails, that is our annual membership fee for the reaching across Illinois library system. In addition to a lot of really excellent programming. Really excellent programming that we get access to for continuing education for staff. We do also get a lot of access to services, discounts as well as our van delivery service, which is really, I think, the biggest thing. So all the vans that move stuff around between libraries in the area, that's all courtesy of rails. Okay. Then last one I'll draw attention to, which is annual fee, is the fee to tax systems. They handle the monitoring for a security system. So that is re-upping for continued monitoring for the next year. Okay, those are the ones that I had marked to highlight and called your attention. Do I have any, are there any questions on any of the other checks?
This is just a silly question. Why, why were there two in the break? I've never seen that happen before.
It is, when there are, when there is a break of any sort, after poking around at this a bit, it seems to be mostly when there is a really big bill that it prints over onto multiple bills.
Okay.
And that's, that's where if you've, if you've signed, which I know you have, you get the checks that just say void, void, void. And then what happened here, I'm pretty sure what happened here, is that we had a particularly large Amazon bill. So that, let's see, going on for two pages taking just Amazon.
Okay.
It went on for taking up more, more space than usual. Amazon and or Baker and Taylor is usually, one or the other of them usually takes up two checks, but this time we had one that took up three. Record setting. Any other questions on the checks?
The only question I had Eric is follow-up from last meeting. It looks like our telco experience improved a little bit, but not much. Granted.
Oh, yeah. They are evened out here. They have the last couple of months come in very regularly at that 360 to 370. So that that is about where we had hoped that they would, that they would be. By the time that we had made the decision to switch vendors, access one, we were looking at monthly bills anywhere from $700 to $900. Right, so.
Okay.
It's, it's quite a bit better.
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
Okay. If there are other questions, then I would look for a motion to approve the checks.
I so move.
Again.
Motion from Janie, second from John. Another roll call vote. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Sorry, hi.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Zaudi.
Aye.
Trustee Heinsohn.
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie. Honey Shaw. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
And Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
All right, checks are approved. That will take us on to committee reports. Moving back to the agenda here, we had two committees that met in past month. Those were building grounds and finance. Building and grounds up first. Janie, you are listed as the chair.
Yeah, that was the one that did I, I was in on that.
Missed that.
Wasn't I?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, and that was the one where we looked at the plans that the village has for the streetscape.
That was two.
Sorry?
That was one of two.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I seem, I remember spending a lot of time talking about how we didn't like the ad around the chairs. Basically, the and I walked by the library today and, you know, looked around and I think I, well, this is up to committee because we're going to have another meeting of the same issue, but they, basically, they would like to put some little seating areas in and at first glance, looking at the plans, at the landscape plans, it seems to me to be very tight. They're trying to fit in, you know, too big of a foot into too small of a shoe, in my opinion. So we were going to look at it again and, and try and come up with ways to maybe put some of that off. And just, just an aside, I was surprised they took out the little garden area at the corner by Inn of Ossie. I had not driven past that corner with, you know, with my attention focused on that corner, and I was kind of shocked to see that. So I, I don't know what happened to that nice sculpture that was in there and all of that.
I don't know, I don't know where it went. The, the kids, the metal kids jumping around.
Yeah, yeah. So I know that they're only halfway done with this so-called streetscape improvement, but so far it doesn't look all that improved to me. Just an editorial comment, and I will not say much else about it right now.
You've got to wait until spring when they get the ad around.
I know, yeah.
Those meetings are Monday.
So I do have a quick update to add on the streetscape plan. I attended the village board meeting yesterday, where it was on the agenda for approval. And I can report that in all the feedback that I drafted up and that I had shared with the committee, that you know, I sent that to Drew and Drew didn't include that in the packet, along with other public comments regarding the plan. And they did make some notes as far as some of the feedback points that we set. In particular, the noting that they would not be putting a bike rack where the current memorial seating area is. So I, I did hopefully get a little bit more information on this, this process that really wasn't, you know, battered around at previous meetings. Which was, which is that the, the big reason for the haste in coming up with a concept plan is grant money. That the village needs an approved plan to be able to apply for certain grants that won't be available after the second week in January. So which is which is, which is to say that this is not a very implementable plan for either block one or block three. And frankly, some of the concerns that were raised for block one were impressive as far as things that needed to be addressed, such as that there hadn't been really any discussion or allowance for how the Brink's truck would be able to get to the bank. So kind of a small oversight. But a number of things along those lines where it was just clear that this was a no means an implementable report, but the, the village is very keen to apply for the, the grant money that's available and is committed to getting a plan approved, even knowing that it is deeply flawed, and then working with all of the entities to improve on that. So.
You know, Eric, just, just out of curiosity, was this a you know, considering that what we're trying to do with the library has been in progress for seven or eight years, is that right Kathy?
Yeah.
It seems that they're, they're trying to throw this together awfully quickly. I'm wondering if, if the grant was, you know, announced that, that they were taking applications with not a lot of lead time. Do you have any idea what is going on there? I just.
I haven't followed up with Drew after the meeting last night, but that was my impression.
Okay.
Was that it is a municipal grant that there are funds that are continuing to be made available. Sometimes the windows are small, but the village wanted to get in on this one. So
Thank you.
We'll be continuing to keep an eye on that, of course, because if you have looked at the plans for the streetscape along block three and along our portion of that across the street here, they the current concept plan calls, calls for some pretty substantial changes. And putting down, creating a seating area by putting quite a lot of concrete and paving over what is currently our yard. So.
At which, and that.
Which is within purview because it's the right of way. So that's, you know, something that they can do if they so choose, but we are hopeful that the village will continue to take our concerns in consideration. Kathy, I interrupted you, sorry.
No, no, I was going to say that's a complete reversal of the reaction of the village committees to our proposal when we put in the flagstone patio in the children's reading garden because of the impervious surface. I mean, they're, they're covering a whole more, a lot more surface with solid concrete than we did with, with the flagstone, and they went into as I recall, they, they know of square footage, how much you're allowed and how much you're not, and it's always right of way is going to be solid concrete.
I think last time we were there Kathy, was a discussion over a variance request for a two foot by two foot square concrete pad. And that actually ended up being kind of tortured and protracted conversation. Something like 15, 20 minutes until one of, one of the ABR members just said two feet by two feet, let's just do this. So, okay. Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll keep an eye on, honestly, I do have some concerns there as far as impervious, impermeable surface. I mean, if there were concerns raised about drainage before, I don't imagine that you know, paving over a great whack of the lawn is going to help things on that front.
It doesn't leave much non-solid surface for moisture.
No. So we'll keep her going. Janie, the other meeting that we had, and I think that's the one that you weren't able to make, was with Jenny, the other meeting that we had, and I think that's the one that you weren't able to make was, uh, with, uh, Sean Kelly and company from Amber Gander, which was looking.
That's right.
Potential furnishings for the Stroh reading room. And they looked very nice and we provided lots of feedback as far as. What we were looking for in terms of furniture and furnishings for that room. So that continues to, to move along here. I need to follow up actually with Sean because I think we're about due to touch base again.
Have you received? Scott, Eric, have you received any notice about that furniture being delivered, uh, the sample pieces?
I have not.
Okay.
Not yet. Hopefully soon. I will. I will be emailing everyone in the committee in. Big red letters. When I get furniture starting to drop on us. It'll be exciting. Okay. Then I think that wraps us up for building your grounds. Anything else to add?
Not that I can think of.
Okay. Uh, then that will take us to finance.
Hey, um, well, I, I, I know we're going to get into, um, a discussion on this and our new business. The committee met to, uh, review, um, a fine free proposed policy. And, um, we had, um, some, uh, discussion on the, the pros and cons. And, um, we've, we voted to, um, narrowly to, um. Bring the proposal to the board for, for tonight to look at a policy change for, um, uh, going, uh, fine free. So, um, that's probably going to be the next topic of conversation, um, under a new business.
Okay. Indeed it is. So we'll hop onto that here at the top in the business in a moment. That's where, through our committee reports. For our committees that did not meet, um, are there any updates? Okay. Not hearing any, um, we'll jump into the new business. And first up for the new business is the. Proposed policy change for overdue fines. So. As Bill noted, that was the. Review by the finance committee, um, who did vote to, uh, send it forward to the board of trustees for, uh, consideration. The, the policy revision is focused on eliminating overdue fines. Not all, uh, fees, but in particular the overdue fines. Um, also presented along with the revised policy are the summary statements, uh, laying out, uh, a lot of the discussion points. That we have had at committee meetings going forward. As well as a couple of the, uh, very nice promotional materials that have been prepared by staff in the event that we should approve the policy. The policy proposed itself. Does very much reflect standard practice at other libraries in the area that have already traveled down this path, uh, eliminating their overdue fines. And tapping into what they have found works. So as it's laid out, uh, in essence, items go overdue. As they always have, when they are still checked out past the due date. Once an item is overdue for fourteen days, the patron's account is blocked. And they need to return the item in order for the block to be lifted. At forty-five days. The replacement cost is added to the patron's account. And after one hundred and eighty days. The item is considered lost and it can no longer be returned. At any point prior to that, if the item comes back, then the account goes unblocked and the charges for replacement go away. But past that. Because we, at that point, will have made decisions about the item, whether we're going to continue to have it in the collection, um, whether we're going to replace it, most likely if we replace it, replacement has already been purchased and it's in the library. At, at that point. It's officially lost item that needs to be replaced. If the patron is able to find it, then. They can keep the item. So, um. Staff has, uh, really carefully considered, um, and laid the groundwork for this possible. Policy change. I'm happy to. Is there any questions anybody might have? If there is discussion desired, uh, my recommendation this evening is that the policy change be approved. With an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-two.
Eric, it's Bonnie. Um, one thing that I'm not sure how it plays into this, and this might have been. Kind of a height of COVID thing, um. Auto renew? Do, do some items in the collection auto renew?
All of them. Well, most of them. Um, if they have renewals available, uh, they have the capacity to auto renew. There are a few, I, uh, collections that don't renew at all, such as the trending titles being the big one. But for pretty much everything, the. It'll have renewals available and if nobody places a hold, then it will auto renew. And. The auto renewal policy has been really well received. I cannot possibly overstate how, uh, much people have appreciated that. And, uh. It has have, as with other of our policy changes that have increased convenience for patrons, um, it has decreased, uh, that fines and fees revenue.
So how would those two things work together? The auto renew policy and this. Policy change on overdue fines.
Well. If there is no. If there is no hold that has been placed and the renewal is available, an item will, um, auto renew when it gets to its due date and it will never go overdue.
It, does it auto renew only once or does it auto renew multiple times?
Multiple times. So, um, standard rule is three renewals, uh, for most all collections and. It will use all of those if you keep getting to that, that due date, um, whether you get, uh, past the due date. Either by using all of your renewals or by, um, keeping an item after it has been. You know, it was an item that wasn't, you know, it wasn't possible to do it. You know, once you get past that, that due date, um, and any renewals have been. Used auto or otherwise, then the overdue policy would kick in.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
You know, but before that point, you know, it's still out, still good. Any other questions, comments?
I wanted to weigh in briefly if I might, but I'm sorry, Matt, were you going to say something?
Well, the only other thing I was going to add is, Eric, didn't you mention during the finance meeting that the impact of having the auto renewal? Had decreased our fines by about sixty percent?
Yep. We're, we're down now to a projected two thousand five hundred per year. So it's gotten pretty, pretty minimal.
Yeah, so I think that's an important footnote in this discussion. Sorry, Cass.
Yeah, sure. So, um, I was the dissenting vote, uh, the proposal to recommend. Fine free to the full board and I'll tell you exactly why. It has nothing to do with the, the, the philosophy, the policy or the, um. Excellent preparation that staff made in presenting their point of view. My concern is, uh, removing a. You know, two thousand dollars in, in, um, revenue from our budget. So when you look carefully, um. It looks as though we're okay with other lines of revenue. Nothing is a sure thing, but, uh, hopefully. You know, we'll keep, continue to keep an eye on things and, um, make that up. And. I saw from the director's report, there's some additional avenues of opportunity in the future. Those seem to be coming at us. More frequently than they ever did in the past. So that's really encouraging. I. Told the finance committee that I would, um, a big hesitation that I have is. The public perception of asking for donations and then at the same time taking money out of our, um, revenues. So. I would want to discuss with Melissa and John, uh, their feelings on. You know, this fine tree aspect. Melissa, I, um, met with Eric and me earlier this week and, um, she said that she and John had touched on the topic and that they felt that. The overall impression, uh, to potential donors would be more favorable by having a. What is considered a pretty generally wide, uh, favorable new policy. So John, if you could just weigh in on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that. I think the. The potential benefits of having fine free policy. Particularly when we're looking for donations probably outweighs. The money that we would collect for the, for the fines. I mean. I mean, I think it cuts the other way if we're digging them. For late fees, there may be a distance enough to make any, to make gifts, you know, so.
Personally, I would, I would agree with John on, on that. I, I think, um. You know, I, I. Most people don't delve into what our finances are and don't really know what part of the revenue stream we get from fines. And I, I don't think that that is going to impact anybody negatively. If anything, I, I think, um. It's going to make people feel more generous. Toward the library as a whole because we're being more generous to the patrons as a whole if we go find free. And I, I know I've mentioned this before, but I'm still haunted by. This little guy in the Evanston Public Library, he wanted to take out some books and couldn't because he owed twenty bucks and his dad was standing there and, and. Didn't want to fork over twenty bucks and.
Well.
I realize Lake Bluff is very different from Evanston, but it just, it's, I cannot get that image of that little kid out of my head.
Yeah.
Like, I think that, uh, you know, the more sort of dig into some of this stuff as well, that, um. I think when the Chicago Public System, uh, libraries went fine freeing, I guess, like, they got a lot of materials back that they thought was lost. And, and of all the cars that were blocked because of fines, twenty percent of them were children's cars. So. You know, you're sort of blocking out people that you really want to use a library. So it's, it's, I, I think. While it was a generator before, I think, I think you've got it in here, Eric, like eighteen grand was, um, at one time. And now it's down to twenty-five hundred. So you, you're talking about something that was nearly two percent, that's less than point three percent. And you've replaced it with other revenue generating type things. So it's sort of a, a thinking outside the box and. And more and more people that I talk to get surprised that we are doing passports. So I think the word's going to get out and. It's, it's going to be a constant generator, I believe, going forward.
Any other questions, comments?
I, I just want to make sure I understood John's feedback. So John, you, you believe that the, the goodwill of sunsetting the.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, if there is any more discussion, I would look for a motion.
I, I will make the motion to, uh, go to a, uh, to accept a fine free, uh, proposed policy change.
And I will second enthusiastically.
Uh, and we will do a roll call vote. Trustee Heinsel.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Thong.
Hi.
Feel like I'm missing someone. Did I get everybody?
Jenny.
Jenny.
Uh, trustee Graziano.
I think she may have dropped.
Well. She went temporarily absent. Oh, here, she, she'll be back in.
There you go.
There we go. Jenny?
Uh, it reads connecting on my screen.
Acting.
There we are.
Jenny, welcome back.
Sorry, my computer died.
You had, uh, we were just voting on the, uh, overdue, uh, fines policy change.
Yes, I.
Okay. Vote is unanimous, policy change is approved. Going to effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. Okay, and that will take us up then to our next. Didn't go far enough.
Eric, I was expecting at least a confetti cannon, if not.
Well.
How about a woo?
Because I've had so much electronics trouble this fall, so. I think the confetti cannon is out in the staff workroom and I'm over here.
Yeah, to, to be fair, we are on mute.
Yeah, I was going to say, be grateful that our computers are on mute right now.
They're excited.
But I will give a woohoo.
Thank you, Katie. Okay. Next item of business I have up is, uh, resolutions of thanks for members of the library staff. So, um, as was mentioned briefly at the last, uh, board meeting on October the twenty-eighth. Of this year, a community member who was present in the library's spruce meeting room, uh, experienced a major medical incident. Was a sudden emergency event, the sort that is always a challenge. The library and community of Lake Bluff, I think, can and. Really should be proud of the response of the staff members who were present to handle the situation. Staff responded as a team, provided, uh, critical decisions and actions necessary to provide a positive resolution to the incident. I would like to, for the record. Real quickly, the whereas is from the resolutions. And then I would look for, um. A motion for approval. So. Well. Wait till I get to the end.
Oh, sorry.
Um. First resolution is for Julian Chapman. Uh, and reads whereas on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one at six fifteen PM. A member of the public experienced a major medical event while in the library's food room and became unresponsive and. Whereas Julian Chapman assisted in assessing the patron and making the decision to call nine one one. And whereas Ms. J, Ms. Chapman, Chapman initiated CPR, which she continued until first responders arrived. And whereas Ms. Chapman then provided assistance and comfort to the spouse of the unresponsive patron. After first responders arrived and took over resuscitation efforts. And whereas Ms. Chapman assisted in the cleanup and instant resolution that followed and. Whereas Ms. Chapman's efforts were critical to ensuring the patron received immediate medical attention. And that the library's response to the incident was quick and effective. So that is Julian, the second resolution is for Anna Fife House. Starts the same. Reads, whereas Ms. Fife House retrieved the library's AED device and brought it to the spruce meeting room. And whereas Ms. Fife House relayed information about the pay person's status from the staff member performing CPR in the spruce room. Uh, to the staff member in youth services on the phone with a nine one one operator. And whereas Ms. Fife House organized staff members to clear the building and provide a clear path for paramedics as they arrived. And whereas Ms. Fife House assisted with canceling the evening's programs and closed in the library for the remainder of the evening. And then the third. I have is for Elizabeth, uh, Lizzie Crampton. Whereas Lizzie, uh, Crampton called nine one one from youth services when directed to do so. And whereas Ms. Crampton provided information to the nine one one operator, including updates on the patron's status. And whereas Ms. Crampton assisted in clearing the building and creating a path for first responders and paramedics to quickly get to the spruce room. And whereas Ms. Crampton stayed by the library's front door to provide information to community members unaware of the situation. And to direct, uh, late arriving emergency personnel as to where they needed to have. and to direct late arriving emergency personnel as to where they needed to head. And fourth resolution is for Clara Sada. Whereas Clara Sada took over responsibilities on the main floor of the library, which allowed the three other staff members who were present to focus on the unresponsive patron. And whereas Ms. Sada called and notified the director and the head of adult services, Martha O'Hara of the situation. And whereas Ms. Sada assisted in clearing the library and creating a path for first responders and paramedics to quickly get to the spirit room. And whereas Ms. Sada helped notify patrons scheduled to attend a presentation later in the evening and close the building for the day. And then the last one I have is for Martha O'Hara. Whereas Martha O'Hara was not present in the building at the time of the incident, having been out on dinner break, but rushed back when received notification of the situation. And whereas Ms. O'Hara assisted in the closure of the library and cancellation of the evening's program, sharing information on the website and through social media. And whereas Ms. O'Hara arranged for an overnight special cleaning that allowed for full return of regular services the next morning. And whereas Ms. O'Hara has also been essential to the assessment of the library's response to the situation. Since we have very much definitely taken time to only assess what went well, but what we could perhaps have used in the situation had it been to hand. So those are the resolutions. They are resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and thanks the individuals named for their actions on behalf of the Lake, of the library and community of Lake Bluff on the evening of October 28th, 2021. And that the board directs the library director to provide the named individuals with a signed copy of this resolution and a certificate of thanks. And that the, as a copy of the resolution also be placed in their personnel file. So Jenny, I've now reached the end.
Great. And I have to say, you know, hearing all of this, it was really a team effort from a bunch of people who, who really averted a tragedy. So thank you all so much. And yes, I so moved that all of these certificates of commendation be passed.
I, I second and I'd, I'd also like to say, you know, you, they say that someone's true character is shown at times of great stress or emergency. So very, very delighted to see the, you know, quick thinking, quick acting of the library staff. And should anything like that ever happen to me, I hope I'm at the library.
I was thinking the same thing.
Well, um, on behalf of library staff, we would do our best for you if you were here, but.
Please don't.
Once. You know, I think staff did incredible, but yeah, once is probably enough for a lifetime.
Eric, I was going to say, listening, I, I mean, it's, I'm very proud of everyone involved in this and it's very courageous to step into a situation like this. Just one, you know, one person after another, taking on major responsibilities for the benefit of the group. And that's, that's wonderful. The resolutions, one after another, sound like a well scripted movie. I mean, it's like everyone just fell into place and knew what to do and moved effectively. And, you know, saved a terrible situation. So congratulations, Tom. Thanks from the community. That's, that's good to know the library is such a safe place and that you all work so flawlessly well together.
Yep. If I could offer a brief comment, it really underscores in particular, like you said, Kathy, you know, everyone following through and being a team, in particular for Jillian to start with CPR and be responsive. Because once you start with CPR, you're, you're obligated to continue until, you know, someone takes over for you. And so for her to have the wherewithal and just for everyone not to experience that, that state of consternation, but it sounds like really to spring into action and to use the resources and act as a team. I'm really, I'm, I'm, I'm so overjoyed to work with the library and with this group and even Martha to come back from supper and pitch in because I have a lot of employees that would tell me, hey, you know what? I'm on vacation or I'm not at work and, you know, go figure it out. So kudos to everyone. I'm really, really pleased to read these.
You know, Eric, if I could ask, would you please let Carl Shones know about this event?
Yes.
For the rest of our board, Carl is a former trustee. He was the Assistant Police Chief, I believe, of Lake Bluff. He is really the singular reason we have a distributor in the building. He pushed for it. He sought funding. He knew the importance of it and he knew that one day something like this might happen. So I'm very grateful to Carl for that. We all should be, but I'd like him to know that because of his service to the community, you know, all of this took place and had a good ending.
Good point.
That's a wonderful idea, Kathy.
Um, I have been thinking of, yeah, reaching out to Carl here and it just hasn't occurred to me while I've been in front of a computer. I would add to that, that the AED didn't really come into, didn't come into play for, for this instance. But Carl also, when he was on the, the board, he and I collaborated together on our emergency management plan. And the, the, the plan that we implemented, that staff followed that, that evening was one that we had worked out as part of that. And that, you know, staff have continued to review regularly so that we stay familiar with it. So, yeah, Carl definitely deserves a a call and some thanks. Okay.
Ready to vote?
Whether we're ready to vote.
Okay.
We've got motion in a second. So all in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you all.
Eric, I just have a quick question. Since Lizzie and Claire are not present at this meeting, I'm, how are you going to be notifying them about this?
Well, they know that the resolution is, is on the agenda for tonight. I made.
Okay. Okay, good.
Wanted to also have the chance to be here in, in person if they were able to. I think actually Lizzie and Claire are both working this evening. So we're both out at the desk.
The, it is a Tuesday evening. You are 100% correct. Nevermind.
Wasn't, so it wasn't possible.
Right.
But I will be then following up with them, letting them know about the approval and look at the certificate and.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah. And I should report as well that I got just recently a request from Chief Hosking. Chief, please for Lake Bluff for information on of that events that, that evening specifically is related to library staff because he had heard good things about the response from the first responders that had been over. He wanted to put forward some, a resolution of thanks at the village. In addition to the one here tonight at the library. So. Okay. And that will take us on to our next item on the agenda. Which is the per capita grant application. The next one of which is due on January the 15th, 2022. So the per capita grant application is one that we do every year. It's one that most libraries in the state do every year. And generally speaking, it's pretty straightforward and the money is shared pretty broadly. We've never not gotten application when we applied. Never not gotten funding when we've applied. But it is still a grant. There is still an application. Part of the requirement on the application is that the application get some trustee review. Which is why that before the application is submitted, it always appears in a board packet for trustees to take a look at and for it to be seen at a public meeting. So it is here this evening for as much or as little discussion as the trustees should desire. The, in the past, the format has been that the state puts out all this. These, which are standards for Illinois Public Libraries. And they have checklists and lists of requirements and suggestions for public libraries. And then you are supposed to, they had been doing it as you went through one chapter every year and reviewed your services, say on outreach or readers advisory. Or what have you, whatever the, the chapter that year was. If this year's application seems long, it's because it is. It's because this year and last year, they have required us to go through the entire book. All 13 chapters and review the service from stem to stern. So I am hoping that we will get a little bit more focused on that next year because it is long and redundant.
I was going to ask about that, Eric. If this is something that comes up every year, it doesn't sound like it's real cookie cutter though. It sounds like it has to be thought through. Are, are you the one who writes them? Yeah.
Yep. Ordinarily each, each year is fairly different because they usually pick out particular things. There was a few years in there where there was a attack tutorial sort of review guide website that they had you using. You know, and the, the requirements managed had for a long time, managed to be pretty varied, but the last two years, not so much. Hopefully we'll get more varied again in the future. Otherwise, there's likely to be a director's mutiny on the North Shore.
So just a, a small thing, Eric, other, the forms are dated for 2020. So is this a, this is this for last, for money that we've already spent in 2020 to, to claim back? Or is it, is it the fact that?
Where are you seeing the 2020?
Well, it's in two. It's like, if you look at the bottom of page one, you'll see the form says 2020.
Oh, yeah.
And then if you go right to the end for the fiscal year, the fiscal year is March 2020.
The, this one?
Um, let me get, let me just, if you, yeah, right there. Look at fiscal year. It says 2020.
Yes.
Third line down.
So for this one, the last two pages are the expenditures report. So part of the application is they want to know that you were.
Spent the money.
You, that you spent the money that they gave you last year.
Okay.
So this is for the, the funds that we applied for in January 2020 and would have received later that year. What did we spend them on?
Got it. Okay.
So that's why that stated at 2020, at, at the top, that looks to me like it's probably the date that the forms date to.
Yeah, that's, that's probably the, the revision level.
Yeah. So no questions? Good eyes? Any other questions, comments on capital grant?
Yeah. What is the grant? Do we request a specific amount? Or it's determined an amount per capita? And if so, do, does it usually go up or down or stay flat?
It is an amount per capita. So they have a formula that they apply to the community's population. Most frequently in the past, it's been something in the vicinity of one and a quarter that you receive. You can see that our 2020 grant was 7152. They, they upped that a bit this past year. And we were, I think, eight, five around there instead. You do not know ahead of time. Which does mean that there is a little bit of an element of uncertainty with a per capita grant. When the state went several years without an approved budget, we were, there were many applications. There were a number of years of applications that went in and nobody was just receiving any funds. Nothing was getting sent out for a while there. So there is a bit of unreliability. They, they can and do change what the multiplier is as it suits the state. So generally that's 7152. If you're going to bet on that number, that's the one to bet on.
Okay. And when, when do we find?
I'd be confident. Put it that way.
Okay. When do we find out how much we receive? Fiscal year starts May 1.
Um, award letters would be heading out. It would arrive either late May or the start of late May, late April or the start of May.
Okay, great.
And then the funds would usually arrive October. So we, we do break out the per capita gap, per capita grant revenue and expenditures in that separate rap gifts and grants fund. Just so that it's got its own, it's got its own little house over there where we can track money in and money out, but that it's not part of the regular budget. Because if something that's going to be, you know, those reliable, the same story with the neighborhood fees, then you can't really justify budgeting regularly to that.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on all things per capita grant? Okay. We can move on then. This is not one actually that needs a motion of any kind. It's just here for review and discussion. So I will then move us on to one that will require a motion, which is an agreement for library services between the library and the Forest Bluff Montessori School. So Forest Bluff Montessori, we have in the same, similar manner to the agreements that we have with District 65 and District 115, have had over the years, agreements with them to provide library service to students that are resident on incorporated Lake Bluff. It's not as every year a thing as those two agreements are for a very straightforward reason that they don't always have students who live in unincorporated Lake Bluff. So it's kind of an as needed by school year thing that we have done. In this case, there have been a couple of families that they have known from Incorporated Lake Bluff that are attending there. And been in discussion to get the agreement back in place. So because it's a much smaller scope, as, as far as what we're providing, usually it's in the neighborhood under five carts for kids. They're often, you know, just a couple, one or two. The compensation to the library is $50 to keep it as a contractual agreement. That, yeah, pretty, pretty straightforward. Template is based off of the intergovernmental agreements that we've made. So any questions on, on this one? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I so move.
Second.
Motion from Jenny, second from John. And since it is contractual, we should probably do a voice vote, roll call vote. Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelmann.
Aye.
Trustee Zou.
Aye.
And trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Motion is approved. And I will print out a copy of this and have it in the blue folder so that Kathy, you and Bonnie, this. Kathy, you and Bonnie, this president secretary can swing by and lend your signatures. Okay, and that is going to take us up to old business and a report from our we're gonna do it as old business, correct? The discussion on return to in person meeting. We should probably do that first real quick. Sorry, Melissa.
No problem.
Very, very quickly, we hadn't gotten into much discussion last month in November about return to in person. Really, the challenge, I think, has continued to be our old friend. The the numbers do look like they're flat plateauing a little bit, but it also still looks like we're at seven and nine thousand new cases a day. So my my sense has been that we're likely not close to returning. That January will probably still be remote, but that if things continue in a positive direction that can and should discuss for the months. In person. I I think the big thing and the the reason that having it for an agenda item is just going to be deliberate is as far as what we're doing and make it an evaluation process. The the face to face meetings are the norm and we want to get back there when it's seems like it's feasible and a good idea to do that. Any questions, thoughts on in person meetings?
I had actually talked to Eric last month about discussing this and then, of course, you know, things changed a little bit and it is winter and all this. So we we need to consider, continue being cautious. And just sort of revisit this. Hopefully, I mean, I would like to see your faces in one room at some point in time in the future, and I'm sure we all will, but I think we'll just obviously continue to to caution some of the meetings, some of the committees are meeting in person at the library. So we'll just kind of see how it goes. Hopefully, you know, the world will stay healthy and get healthier and we'll be able to and see how it is.
Janie, did you have, looked like you were gonna heads up to say?
Well, I I was just going to say that pretty much the same thing Kathy said that while we're all looking forward to to getting back to face to face meetings. We need to be cautious. I also want to mention that sometimes it's it's nice to have the option of of joining in remotely when you're traveling and things like that. So.
I know it's been much discussed that there there is definitely a desire that has been kindled to have Zoom participation as an option going forward.
Yeah, and this is, this is Bonnie. I would second that. I think it may also better serve the community to have dial in option. If you as a community member wanted to attend a board meeting of the library, it might be easier for you to do so remotely.
Good point.
The library has developed a pretty good hybrid format for meetings, which is something we can certainly discuss in the the future as well. It's something that I don't think was available when all this shut down abruptly. So it's like everything else, things are just getting more flexible. So these are good thoughts and we'll just figure out what what best with the best is. My book club was actually, we 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 decided against it, but we were actually gonna meet through a hybrid system set up at our library. So it's, you know, the technology is there and the availability and people are opting for that convenience in their lives. So we'll see where it goes.
Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise, I will turn things over to Melissa for her coordinator's report. All right, Melissa, take us away to the wide, wonderful world of fundraising.
Thanks, Eric. What a, what a introduction. Well, we are finishing twenty twenty one with a gift from Mrs. Neville Bryant of Trab Creek Farm fame. So it's a great way to end the year. Thank you to all who came to the December first presentation. I really appreciate the support. I hope you learned a little bit more about what we're doing and had a chance to answer any questions you have. If anyone who wasn't able to attend wants a presentation and a run through of our proposed changes, I'd be happy to give you one. Just let me know when. We're plugging along. We didn't have fantastic turnout at December first. It may have been the time of year. It could also be a number of other factors. Bonnie has generously offered to help me with some inroads to Abbott and Abbe. So I will take her up on that and we will begin that process of really trying to connect with local corporations and businesses, but also foundations.
And if if I can jump in briefly, Melissa, um, you know, those of you who've walked Lake Bluff may notice that Abbott Laboratories sponsored a number of the plaques that were added to our community in the last couple of years. And I was just wondering if anyone on the board happens to know who in Lake Bluff helped to make that happen? Like, I think Melissa and I could should do a little digging there to start.
I imagine that was Mark Deward.
Yeah.
Mark Deward is a retired Abbott fellow who was a former village trustee and he's on the he's a strong sporter, if not on the board of the museum. Janie, you stand the board?
Yes, he is.
Okay, yeah. So I'm guessing, I was funny, I was just thinking about that today as I was doing some driving, I thought. I'm certain, and he was the, and Gillian can fill us in the title. He led the the birthday celebration or he coordinated it. So he would have been involved in all the materials and preparation for all that.
Thank you.
He lives on West Hawthorne or Park.
Melissa, I believe, has, you've got his contact information already, correct?
I do. She was invited to the presentation. He did not come, but I plan to follow up with everyone we invited, a total of almost fifty people with a year end letter. Just keeping them apprised of where we are in the foundation and asking them to stay engaged. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Not hearing any, and it sounds like you're to the end of the report. Melissa?
I am. Thank you.
All right, I will jump over to, yes.
I just wanted to say, I'm sure on that behalf of all of us, thanks to Melissa for, she's really working hard. She's putting in a lot of time and creativity and imagination and she's always in a good mood and she's upbeat and happy and positive. And I know, you know, a force behind her energy and great ideas is John Heinzelman, who's working behind the scenes as a mentor. And so, John, thank you as well. Both of you are doing a great job. We very much appreciate your involvement and your commitment. So many thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Melissa's doing a terrific job. I second that.
John's doing a great job. I'd be lost without him.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
This person that we're talking about, Mark, so he sits on the board of the History Museum? Where did we end up with things with the history museum regarding the bricks?
So. It's, it's okay, Melissa.
I I'm, I'm, my eye is twitching.
So. By what I'm hoping, what I'm aiming for is a thirty second summary. After some back and forth and initially, you know, it looked like we were gonna have Melissa step in on the bricks. That didn't pan out. The museum sent a series of emails stating that they were simply going to just take over the program and they were going to keep all of the the revenue. I had pointed out that we really needed to discuss this and come to an agreement. The the brick area is on museum property that is not leased to the library. They are going to blow up the agreement, then they would really need to comment apply to the library board for the lease agreement. For a special use of property beyond what their lease permits. Any alterations or changes to the area that they rent or to other aspects of the property they're supposed to ask for. So that ultimately was where things got left. At that point with, we don't seem to have an agreement by email, so we're waiting until the discussion resumes at the Intergovernmental Agreement Committee meeting previously scheduled in January. I can report as an update that Eva Javier, who's the treasurer for the Friends had taken a look through the procedure and finances and seems to be of the opinion that she could take this over for the Friends at a much lower effort and and cost than it's currently being managed. And my understanding is that she wants to put that forward for the, at the meeting in January, that the Friends of the Library take on the bricks. She seems going home, which is good.
That's good. So it ended positively since we're gonna be talking to him about supporting some of our efforts.
Mark's a really upbeat guy and I think that he will take a positive spin on just about any, anything. So I think that he will be happy to meet with Bonnie and go forward from that. I don't think we have to worry about any repercussions with Mark.
Oh, oh, good. Okay, perfect.
I'm, Mark regularly works with us because he's part of a lot of village wide committees. He works, has worked shoulder to shoulder with Jillian on a number of things. You know, the we keep hoping that we'll, you know, keep moving forward within our relationship with the museum for a lot of long history and long reasons that we don't have time to go into tonight. You end up this kind of
And as I recall, the the outreach, the original outreach was to the friends in the first place. So this is kind of back where the intention of the museum was. So
Yeah.
Hopefully, a win win for everyone.
Great. That sounds good. Thank you.
Good question, Jan. Thank you. Okay. Director's report. Another busy month. Statistics continue to be, to be up, which is really, really positive and good to see. That includes the noticeable increase, a sizable increase in the digital collections and usage and also an equivalent actually increase in usage in the youth services collections versus twenty nineteen. The the physical materials down in youth services were up just about as much this last month as the digital materials were. And then the adult collections and teen collections were pretty neutral. They were down a little bit, but overall, they were, it wasn't much.
I think he froze.
Yeah.
Yeah, you froze it. Digital, Eric.
Oh, okay. Um, digital, digital collection usage is up, youth services, the physical materials are up. Both of those are actually up about both up about as much as the other. And we're down just a little bit for adult collections and teen collections, but not much at all. It was basically neutral in terms of the the variance for those two. So we continue to be really, really busy, which is great. Other item in my director's report, I do want to be sure to draw attention to here is the possible new revenue source and Anna Feith House deserves credit. This came out of one of her programs that she had held and a conversation that developed with someone at that program. So the the Illinois Department of Public Health is seeking to partner with public libraries to provide aid to folks who are seeking to apply for medical cannabis, but are struggling with what is currently an online only application. So they need, in essence, public libraries who can provide technical support doing forms. And then they would refer people to those partner institutions. Helping folks with online interfaces and forums as well is something that we do a reasonable bit of here at the library, helping out with the computers, open our patrons out.
So it's greatly appreciated.
Very much.
So it's it's, it's not completely out of left field and they do provide some specific training if you're selected to be a partner library. The really noteworthy thing for us financially would be that in addition to being a partnered library, potentially helping some folks out. IDPH is looking to pay seventy diet, seventy five dollars for each application that we would assist with. So that could be another potential good partnership and revenue source. And also on revenue sources, I should note that we are expecting a check shortly from brewery. Or what I think now is actually the fourth iteration of library beer. I think we're at the fourth generation. Is that correct, Julian?
Yes, I'm not Gillian, but yes.
So, okay, those were really the ones that I wanted attention to in my director's reports. Any questions, comments? Otherwise, I think we're ready to move to adjournment. Then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, happy
Merry Christmas.